...to order and start with the pleasure. Good evening and welcome. We'll start the meeting with community forum. If anyone would like to address the board, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Rachel Shaw with 81 Grand Avenue. I'm going to read. Sorry. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the board members for their time and dedication to our public schools. I'm the choir director at Rockville High School and the music department subject leader for the middle school and high school program. I was in attendance at the last board meeting and was disappointed that the board asked questions but never received answers in regards to the secondary music programs. Even with these gaps in knowledge and not liking the breakdown, the board still made the decision to cut the music teaching position at the middle school, and I feel it is my job to inform you of the ramifications of this decision in hopes that you will reconsider. I would like to address some of the questions that the board had at the last meeting in regards to the music teaching positions at the high school and middle school levels and their perceived inequity. First and foremost, the middle school has 3.2 for FTEs because at Vernon we pride ourselves on providing students with a well-rounded education which includes offering music to all of our students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as well as offering them vocal and instrumental options through band and chorus. While we offer the same kind of opportunities at the high school, our schedule allows for more flexibility and therefore two teachers are able to provide instruction to all the grade levels. As for the consequences of this decision, if this cut stays in effect, it will not be class size that is increased as you were originally told. The plan is to dissolve the music instruction in eighth grade. This would create a gap for students between seventh grade and ninth grade which interrupts the vertical alignment that Vernon as a district feels is important for our students to be successful. Not only would this affect the vertical alignment, but it also creates inequity in the unified arts offerings at the middle school level. Students would continue to receive instruction in art, family and consumer sciences, technology, computer science, and physical education in all three grades. However, music instruction would be left to only sixth and seventh grade. Even with the plan to cut eighth grade instruction, the program would still be tasked with cutting more. The teachers would not be able to fulfill all the remaining courses that we offer and therefore the program would look like a skeleton of what it once was. The very night that the board made the decision to cut the middle school music program was the evening of exploration at the middle school. The music department was sharing with parents all of the great offerings we have for all of our students, not just the students who opt to take band and chorus. Many parents commented on how excited they were that students would receive such a well-versed education at VCMF which included all of the unified arts programs. We have promised our parents that students would receive music instruction in all middle school grades. With this decision, we will no longer be able to keep our promises and that is the very reason why many parents decide to look elsewhere for educating their children. I hope that with this knowledge, the board will reconsider the decision that was made last Wednesday night. Ultimately, I know that the board as well as the administrators in this district want to do what is best for our students. Cutting the middle school music program down to its bare minimum would not accomplish the goal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our worksheet. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. You have, I think, two handouts. One should be in a paper clip in front of you. Sorry. Nice talking to you. I want to go back to the board forum. I'm so sorry. I sent a letter today and I was asked to read it. It's sitting right in front of me and I'm sorry I forgot. So let me just read it to you. "As a special education teacher..." Identify the person. Oh, it was from Pamela Carmel. She was a teacher in our TAO program. "As a special education teacher in the TAO program for 20 years, I was shocked to read in the Journal of Inquirer that the special education supervisor for grades six to 12 was motioned for elimination. Over these years, I have found this position essential in meeting the needs of countless special education students in this district. This person not only oversees the many middle school and high school special education and 504 students, but also manages the many specialized programs at VCMF and Rockville High. Secondly, they supervise the next step program and out of district placements. This still does not include running PPTs, writing and finalizing IEPs, teacher evaluations, providing good services, and attending various meetings. It is also important that they are knowledgeable in the state and federal special education compliance guidelines. As I have observed over the past 20 years, the person who has done this stuff has put in many hours before and after school and also on weekends. I'm not sure if you are aware that the person in this position helped save the district a significant amount of money. I have sat at countless planning and placement teams, meetings where parents, advocates, or lawyers have requested for a student to be outplaced. This person has worked with these individuals to ensure that these students stay in their home school with accommodations to meet their ever-changing needs. For this to be successful, numerous meetings are held, phone calls are made, and emails are answered. They are also responsible for helping students and families transition back to Vernon public schools from out of district placements in a timely manner which saves the district money. This position is vital to meeting the needs of special education students and their families in the future. I would ask that you reconsider the decision to eliminate this position from the 2014-15 school budget. I would ask for this letter to be read at the Board of Education meeting and attached to the next. Sincerely, Pamela Carmel." Just wanted to share that with everybody. So now we'll move on to Dr. Carmel. I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mrs. Fisher. The board has a packet that has answers to the questions that you asked at the last board meeting. As we look at these answers and then we're going to... You should also all have a summary page, a separate... Yes. Okay. Thank you. Then let's go through the questions and then we'll move to the summary page. And I know that we have administrators here who'd like to speak to specific things on that, on the summary cut sheet. The first question was, can we pursue the wireless at Vernon Center Middle School through the Alliance Grant? I was quite delighted to receive word this afternoon that yes, we can. I did... I created a position for doing just that and it was accepted by the State Department. So we're actually looking... Mr. Bird is exploring the other schools as well to see if that's a possibility. So we were very excited to find that that was an acceptable use of year three funds. "The Connecticut International Baccalaureate Academy has become an official chef school, just like the schools that are actually in Hartford. So there is no tuition charge and will be no tuition charge going forward." That is from the East Hartford Superintendent. Question was, how many secretaries are at Rockville High School? I've organized them into two areas, actually. Rockville High School Secretaries, and that's a total of 10 and one-half, or 10.5 full-time equivalents. And then others who perform clerical duties are professionals, and that is 3.5 full-time equivalents, as you can see. Mr. Rocket is here, so he certainly can make clear any of those particular positions. You can see there are several of them that are 12-month, those that are not, don't have anything after tomorrow, all 10-month. What administrative position can be reduced by 1.0? And I'm going to discuss that in a few minutes, but I did want to highlight the last two years. So in 2012-13, we had... This is below the rank of superintendent, fortunately or unfortunately, that you don't have a choice about that position. That is law. Every district has to have one. All of the other positions, however, I did include in that 24.5. So that includes the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of Pupil Personnel, and now Director of Personnel, et cetera. So 24.5 is what we had two years ago. This current year, we have a decrease of 2.0 full-time equivalents. You can see how that happened. We reduced the three Coordinator positions for Art Music, PE Health, and World Language, and half of the Coordinator of Technology and Grants. We then added in half of an out of district placement, and that was because we had created the new position of Director of Personnel and we needed to take some things off the plate of the person who has that position. And then Teacher Evaluation. We had said a year ago that that would be a one-year position because of the implementation of the new Teacher Evaluation Model, and they have definitely been worth their weight in gold this year, the two people who share that position. But we anticipate that we are amending our model and will be doing so for next year. So this year, in the current proposal, so this is not anything that the board has suggested right now, there's an addition of another 1.0 full-time equivalent. So we're now down to 21.5. This is a 14% decrease over two years. The elimination of .5 Assessment Coordinator, which was the rest of the Coordinator of Technology and Grants. The elimination of the 1.0 Seed Coordinator, and then at the request of the secondary level, both middle and high school, I've added in that .5 Athletic Director as an administrative position. So that's just a summary of what has happened thus far. Request for information about a substitute teacher service. Mr. Picaro has that in the works and we should be getting that. There are some... I think there are two that I know of in the area. There may be others. But people who provide the service, so the sub calls into that service, the service interviews subs, hires them, does their background checks, and all of those things. So they take over all of that work. The number of Magnet School students that require PPTs. We have about 50 students who are identified as special education at Magnet and Charter Schools. And so many... Some of them require two meetings a year. That would be for an initial referral. Others require two meetings a year. That would be when they have their triennial, their every-three-year review. And then the others only have one review each year, annual review. And so we're thinking there are 64 meetings. Some of them have happened already, some of them have not. 64 meetings for 50 students in Charter and Magnet Schools. The question was, how many does Mr. Phelps take care of? He has or will attend 39 of these meetings. He will also attend 13 out of district placements at other than Charter and Magnet Schools as well. So he has a total of 52 planning and placement team meetings. There are approximately 100 that are not attended by Mr. Phelps, so that would be approximately 150... Sorry about that. About 113 altogether. And then there are also 504 meetings. That's Section 504 under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So that's an accessibility as opposed to a learning issue. That's accessing school. And there are about 21 of those. These are all the out-of-district ones. They're not the in-district ones at all. There are many, many of those. So approximately 237 different planning and placement team meetings. The next question was about the number of hours. Mrs. Buell has estimated that it's approximately one and a half hours, which a PPT would be. And prep for and completion of paperwork afterwards would be about another one and a half hours, and travel time an average of about one and a half hours. So if you were looking at about 230 meetings with those times, it'd be 776 hours. In student days, which are six and a half hours long, that's 22 straight student days, just to let you know. Of course, this does not include the parent contact, the visiting of programs, scheduling PPTs, agency contacts, agency meetings, et cetera. Those are all outside of that, which add to that. Are there any questions on the questions?
The intent of item five, when we asked for the RFI to go out, it really wasn't specifically for teachers. It was for substitute staffing services. Now, the chart that you presented was a breakdown of the number of teachers that went out for that required substitutes and those that did not require, if you recall. But the general question is, when we need substitute staffing, that's the process we'd like to look at. And so it could be any position. Mostly teachers, of course. It could be nurses, it could be... Just whatever we need and how do we do it and what it costs us to accomplish it. And it wasn't necessarily to be confined to that particular group of employees.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on... Mr. Stansfield?
Going back to item number one about the Alliance District grant money. Being relatively new again, and this is a new thing for me. Can you explain briefly what that means for year three funds? And are those funds that are already allocated for other things that we would then have to reallocate to the wireless?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Stansfield. The Alliance Grant is a five-year grant that you apply for each year, and as your plan is approved by the state, and it's an iterative process each year, as your plan is approved by the state, you are then... The funding that the state has determined that Vernon is getting is released. In the first year of our grant, the year before this, the town got $671,000. Last year, they got that $671,000 again, plus an additional $731,000. And so our year-two plan had to include those items that we were going to continue, obviously, under the first year's funding, and new items as well. The philosophy of administration has been in the first two years to build capacity of our staff. So we've used teacher-coaches. We've gotten interventionists, which of course we don't want to give up either. Halftime administrator. There's... I can get you that. In fact, we might have even given the list already, but I can get that for you. Our philosophy at this point is that unless we want to fall off the funding cliff in three more years, that we need to start changing from buying positions and people to buying things. And so just in our general conversation, we haven't put anything on paper yet, in our general conversation, we're talking about the leveled readers for classroom libraries of all ages. We're talking... So purchasing books. We're talking about... This year, we did purchase the Student Management Information System. So next year, to purchase wireless is another thing that would be done. And certainly will support assessment, will support data diving for teachers, it will support all kinds of things. So that is another thing that we might be able to do. We're also looking at... I'm going to forget all the things now, not for fair discussion. But there are... Oh, professional development for teachers, because we want to build capacity in the teachers. So we're trying to make that shift in year three. My understanding from the governor's budget a year ago, which was a biennial budget, was that this town would receive an additional $731,000 in year three. And so that would be a total of 2.2 million. And so we have to truly think of what needs to continue, what needs to be funded by the Alliance Grant. And it's really all for teaching and learning, so... Any other questions? Move on to the worksheet that we have? Thank you. If I may again. Thank you. You do have a worksheet in front of you. There are a couple of changes. I just wanted to say a couple of things before we begin. You can see that we have touched many things that do not touch people, such as workers' compensation and prescription drugs and things like that. But we do touch many of our employee groups in here. I think that there aren't any employees in the district that don't worry about this, certainly on a personal level, but also on a systemic level. Because everything we do is systemic. We need to meet the needs of our children systemically. And so if that means two paraprofessionals instead of a teacher, then that's what it means. If it means a teacher instead of two secretaries, then that's what it means. And so we have to look at what's best for our students and then make those decisions. Right now, Vernon Elementary School is costing us just about a half a million dollars. I would also say that it has saved us an additional half a million dollars. Much of that is for students who have come back to the district. There are 12 students who've gone in and out. I'm going to say we have about eight right now. Several have actually returned to their classrooms and are very successful. And several have gone to our Vernon Elementary School and we have avoided the cost of their outplacement. So in that particular program, I think that it's paying for itself many times over, well, twice over at this point. Pupil Personnel Administration, again, and the letter from Ms. Carmel certainly said it eloquently, we have saved much. We have avoided the cost, again and again and again, the hours, the countless hours that both Dr. Pasell and Mr. Wiley have put in, and certainly anyone in their position would, to avoid costs, to keep students in district and/or to bring them back is... Can just cannot be counted. They've done yeoman's work. You heard from Mr. Rocket last year, last week rather, last week, about the great things going on at Rockville High School. I don't think I could say it any better than he. Mr. Harrison is here, I think there he is. Mr. Harrison is here this evening. He told me this afternoon that so far this year, 10 Magnet School students have returned to VCMF this year. I think we only had about 25 out, so that's pretty good, good return rate. And that after the evening of exploration, there were three or four parents who did come up to him and said, "I was considering Magnet Schools. I want you to know that you have everything in the war and we're not going to consider that anymore. We're going to keep our kids here." He can certainly say that. The classes at VCMF are relatively small. They're around 210 as an average, which is very surprising. I wanted to give you the numbers coming up. These are the next five classes, starting with grade five, four, three, et cetera. 245. Fourth grade is 270. The third grade is 253. The second grade is 263. And then 244 and 261 is our kindergarten. So we are maintaining the average that we used to have, around 250 a class. I believe that with the changes at the middle school and the changes at the high school, that we're going to keep those classes, that those students are going to continue on with us and see us as their number-one option. So I understand, given the financial constraints that we have, I would love to just take my red marker and go through, but I just ask that you do what you always do, and that's make your decisions as what's best for kids. And I know that's what you do. You don't need reminding. So I think I'm saying it for the audience to let them know that that is how you make decisions, and I know you do that all the time. So I thank you very much. If you would look at your budget worksheet, you can see those proposed adjustments that are still in the left-hand column, or second from the left, are the painter and the painter supplies. Mr. Rocket has changed... We put 1.0 Secretary, and what he did was change that just a little bit. And so he is changing a 12-month secretary to a 10-month secretary. That would be in one of the Assistant Principal Secretaries. So one would remain at 12 months and one would go to 10 months. The secretary in the Athletic Director Office would go from 1.0 to .5. And the Special Ed Secretary position would go from 1.0 to .5 as well. Now, mind you, there is an opening for an Assistant Principal, so we're not talking people here, no one's losing a job. They are going to maintain their jobs. Their assignments may be different, but they will not be losing their jobs if that was a concern. So those... And then the Library Assistant. So those are the cuts that Mr. Rocket has recommended to come up to the amount that would have been a full-time secretary's actually over that amount as well, but don't tell Mr. Rocket that. He... I think that that is an example that Mr. Rocket, where you can know that Mr. Rocket knows his building, he knows how... Where the cuts can come to not hurt his staff and to not hurt the programs at the school. In other items for discussion, there's two FTE. That would be at the middle school, and I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison to come up and discuss that. The next is also a 1.0 Secretary at the middle school. And then the board put on that list the Supervisor of Special Education, which is not a recommendation of mine, but it is there. So if you don't mind, I would like Mr. Rocket to have an opportunity to speak as... Oh, sorry, Mr. Harrison to speak as Mr. Rocket did last week. That's all right. Mr. Fisher, thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Thank you. It was unfortunate that I wasn't able to be here last week. Obviously, we'd have been able to answer some of these questions for you, but it conflicted with our evening of exploration, so which one went very well, by the way. There's a couple of things that I was a little taken aback by, and I wanted to make sure I clarified this for everyone. I had recommended, you know, unfortunately, the music position, but also two of the reading interventionists. And I think there was a question of how much that truly impacts some class sizes for the reading interventionists. So I wanted to make sure people understood that our reading interventionists are reading teachers. They have five classes per day. What we do with those reading teachers, they have smaller groups. It's between five and eight kids that are in those classes. But when you eliminate those positions, it's not like they're just pulling one or two kids to work with them one-on-one. What they're doing is they have classes that are scheduled in their schedule where they see kids, five to eight of them, in certain classes to address the reading needs in smaller groups. So when you combine those, you're looking between 60 and 70 kids if you eliminate two of those positions. Those kids would go back to certain classes. They have to impact class sizes. So what it does, though, is it allows me to keep some of the schedule integrity and allows me to continue with some of the flexibility that I need as Building Principal in looking at the overall schedule. It's certainly not ideal to lose some of these positions, but again, the reading positions, we can look at other options to address some of our reading needs. But those classes will certainly impact class sizes. We have a Read 180 reading program where kids are being pulled out. I know there was a question about some social studies numbers. Those Read 180 kids, for the most part, are pulled out during Read 180 time from social studies. Again, you try to avoid math, language, arts, and science. There's no ideal place. But when you look at a building as large as ours and you have a schedule which goes over three grade levels and over nine teams, not everything is going to fit perfectly into a schedule, and there will be some conflicts. So again, when I recommended the two reading interventionists, and I'm still recommending, you know, one of the additional reading interventionists, it will impact that. The other options that you look at, if you're looking at FTEs, if you look at a Unified Arts teacher, we already with the music elimination in eighth grade, you're already looking at five rotations in seventh, eighth grade. And just to do the math very quickly, you're looking at about 75 kids per grade if we were at like 675. If you divide five into 75, you're looking at about 15. Once you get into only four rotations, and again, at the middle school, everyone's taking the rotations. If you go lower and you go to four rotations, you're over 18. And at 18, you run into... The state doesn't allow you to have some of the classes with more than 18 because of safety concerns with shop or family consumer science or some of those classes. So that's not a viable option. I know you're looking at two FTEs. It's almost like giving you a half a car if you look at some of the core teachers. We're teamed. There are four core teachers on teams. Four core teachers on each team at each grade level. I can't... To give you just two of them, it doesn't work. At least it doesn't work as cleanly as you'd like it to be. And again, you still... We could have split teams. We tried that a couple of years ago where it's a team where maybe looking at seventh and eighth grade. It's not ideal. It didn't work out the way we wanted it to work out. But that's why at times, looking at what we have to offer, looking at where we can have the least impact on student learning, the reading teachers and reading interventionists, we would still be left with a couple of reading interventionists to provide some of the work that would be need to be done. But also, the other impact this has is what we've done recently, and again, going to heterogeneous again across all grade levels starting next year. Again, the concern is, the reading interventionists that provide invaluable reading strategy and interventions to those kids, allowing the special education teachers to go into classrooms and co-teach, when you're looking at, again, heterogeneous, when you're looking at differentiation, when you're looking at parents' concerns about leveling, these are all concerns. So what I'm saying is, I'm not just giving you a service by saying, "Well, cut a reading teacher that's ancillary or something that doesn't, you know, work in this building." Every position I offer you is going to have an impact on student learning and going to have an impact on class size. But again, given our schedule and given everything we're trying to do with the flexibility and the ability to try to look at reaching our lowest and reaching our highest, if we have to blow up the entire schedule, so to speak, that will affect us. By eliminating the reading intervention positions, one or two of them, we still can try to provide the reading services through another way without having to... The feedback from the parents has been excellent, and I was given a very, my charge when I first took over the job, and from talking to a lot of board members and from talking to Dr. Conway and everyone else's, you know, we had to really sell the school. We had to really make sure that people wanted to send their kids to the middle school. We had forty-six percent of parents who were surveyed last year who felt the middle school had a poor quality. Forty-six percent of all parents who were surveyed. We've put a dent in that. We've done some things here where we're starting to turn things around. Comments that have been made, I'm sure you hear the comments, the comments during the surveys, and it's just a handful from the evening of exploration, all talk of the programs that we offer. They didn't even know we had these programs. They didn't realize that we had that to offer their child. Some of the surveys were, you know, the evening of exploration was much better than what the magnet school put on, and they didn't realize with those options how viable an option the middle school would be. To look at cutting or making major cuts at this point would be counterproductive. Again, I know Mr. Rocket spoke of the building and mojo and how everything's going in that way. It's more than just the buildings. When you look at the community and you talk to the community, they're seeing the middle school and they're seeing the secondary schools as a viable option now. I would hate to do what we were asked to do, which was make sure we sell our schools to people wanting to come to our schools and then make these cuts, because clearly, in my mind, it looks a little bit like a bait and switch as well. We sent all these programs out, we have these evenings, here's everything we have to offer, and now we're looking to cut some of these same services. I realize, I look at the numbers, I know your job, I respect that job, I know what you need to do, and I think you asked for four FTEs. I'm saying to you with the music and two reading interventionists and a point-five math interventionist, which was cut out, we had this year, it's not even in this year's budget, we already cut that out. That's three and a half FTEs. I'm asking you to consider that as opposed to that fourth, you know, that extra point-five. But all of these things are connected. The reading interventionists, those positions, we used to have two language arts teachers per team at each grade level. The middle school has taken some hits as well over the past five years. And so when we cut some of those and when some of those positions had to be cut over a period of time that weren't filled, we found a way to not only offer language arts to kids, we increased the core class time for all classes, and then we took some of the four or five other reading teachers and made them the reading interventionists. We still can try to provide that service, but once you get into cutting some of the cores and once you get into cutting some of the other UAs, you're not only affecting that, you're affecting how the whole schedule works. So again, I can appreciate it. I hope you understand, I hope I clarified a little bit about the reading position. So I'm recommending, and again, as far as the two FTEs, I'm recommending another reading interventionist, and for you to take a look at, I'm understanding, there was also another point-five math interventionist, which was cut before we even started talking about the budget this year.
If I could just clarify that, thank you. The mathematics interventionist was a point-five position in the current budget that we were unable to fill, and when the, that was the same as the mathematics position at the high school, except Mr. Rocket cut that early enough and we did not catch this. And so when the budget was brought over, that point-five was not brought over because there was no person attached to it. And so it is, it's in this year's budget, it is not in the next year's budget. So I appreciate what Mr. Harrison is saying, so effectively, he is down another point-five, but dollar-wise, the board doesn't see those dollars. It is in the overall effect here, but it's not a new cut for you. So I know that Mr. Harrison doesn't want to go any further, but I know he is prepared to speak with you if you...
Yeah, and the other thing I just, if I could, just to mention this, I know, again, with parents, some of the big concern with parents looking at the middle school, certainly academic rigor that we're trying to address, but safety and making sure kids in their building are supervised and all of those things that come around with it. And again, our schedule, what we've done creatively over the last couple, three years is all our grades, sixth, seventh, eighth, they change at different times. Their class, the length of class is two or three minutes off here and there, which allows us to change at different times. Again, if you start eliminating a lot of the other things, without getting, the schedule is complicated, but more or less what I'm saying is, you then lose the ability to have some of that flexibility, which I was talking about. You then have to run things that are more common, you may have to run electorally. You're really looking to get away even from the team, teaming at middle school, look at the old junior high model, which we'd rather not do, but, you know, our suspensions are down by more than half, our referrals are down by more than half, our attendance is higher than it's been. I want to say we're one of the highest attendants in the district at one point as far as the middle school over the first four or five months. There are a lot of good things going on there. I realize and notice where they are, but I'm just asking people to realize now may not be the time to really pound into this, because you're going to have parents who are now looking to come there, looking at all of the academic rigor, safety, all of the supervision, all of those things. And if you start cutting and they start looking at that, they're going to see it again as a situation where they're not going to be able to get what they were hoping they could get.
Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr. Harrison, in regards to the music position, so I will admit I'm a little shocked tonight to learn that that effectively eliminates the eighth-grade music instruction. I guess my question would be, and I realize this might be a little difficult to answer off the top of your head, but can eighth-grade music be more of an elective choice and not a requirement for all eighth graders? It seems to me that by eighth grade, most kids know whether they want to do it or not.
Anything can be, and we're looking right now, that's the other thing that we're looking at, I know Mr. Rocket and I and some other people in the district, we're looking at, even with what we presently have, running some other paths or running where, you know, kids are interested in tech ed or kids are looking at other things, absolutely, not only at our middle school, but looking to see how we can form a partnership with the high school. But the music position, again, there are no easy choices here. If you, and again, it's difficult to say this, but we still have two-point-two people at the middle school. We still have the ability for a sixth, seventh, or eighth grader to take music. Eighth grade would still have the ability to take band or chorus. The eighth-grade music was more of an educational music for eighth graders. If people were passionate about it, they still had an opportunity to be a band or chorus or sectionals and things like that. I, again, there's no ideal thing, I don't want to do that, but looking at the overall picture, what we have compared to the high school and whether we can still offer some programming, we can. To answer your question, we are always looking to see how we can even offer some things to kids who want to specialize more in certain areas to prepare them for the future.
Thank you.
Mrs. Arm?
I want to go back just a little bit. Dr. Conway suggested eliminating seven teaching positions. The board said, "Okay, we're not just going to do that, we want to know what those positions are going to be." So it's my understanding that these recommendations came after discussions with you and Mr. Rocket. Yes?
Yes, but I'm sorry, the discussions with who? Dr. Conway or someone?
I would assume Dr. Conway. I'm assuming a lot here, so I'm trying to make sure...
Well, we had some conversations, but as much as Mr. Rocket and I have conversations about Dr. Conway, there are things that happen at the building level which might be better for the middle school than the high school. So yes, I heard there was a certain number that we were looking at, and that's what I had recommended, which was initially three FTEs.
Three FTEs?
Correct.
Okay. And I appreciate that everybody seems to appreciate how difficult this is for the board, okay? But everyone defends every position, music, special ed, everybody does that. I would expect you to, that nobody breaks us an alternative. And I'm not picking on you, Mr. Harrison, you're just sitting there right now.
You can pick on me.
No, I'm not, no. I guess anger is correct to say that we spoke about a music teacher and no one, no one told me, recommend I'm wrong, that that would impact eighth-grade music. And this mantra that we keep hearing is, "Is it good for kids? Is it good for kids?" Appears to me not to have been asked in that circumstance. We were not told. I made that recommendation and choice because no one told me that it would affect eighth-grade music. I want you to know that clearly, not the way I like to do business when we're doing it. And what's good for kids, I would assume that most of us could agree on what's good for kids with a little bit of tweaking, but nobody's bringing any alternatives that don't require us to do something that isn't good for kids. So you make, to me, you make your argument to restore some things, that there must, there must be other places because this isn't good for kids. I want to find something that doesn't go into the classroom. I want to find some things that although they hurt other places and maybe eventually trickle down, but they're not happening in the classroom. You make an argument to restore, to me, to restore a reading interventionist, to restore the music teacher because hurting programs hurts kids. So I don't, I honestly don't know where to go with this now because, like I said, everybody defends their requests and their needs, but nobody offers us an alternative.
And again, it was unfortunate that I wasn't here last week when the conversation was about music. I think just like you have difficult decisions, the difficult decisions also come to the building principals and the buildings. You know, I don't want to talk on both sides here. I realize whatever we cut, and that's what I was saying about the reading interventionists because originally on the survey, we want to say that it's going to impact class size, whatever we cut is going to hurt. But again, I'm also, without getting into a million different reasons, that's why I said I understand the position you're in. I did, when I thought, brought a reasonable offer of saying you were looking for four-point-oh coming into tonight, I'm saying you have three-point-five, so I'm recognizing you have that. My job is to say, how do I look at things that, well, they may hurt, might have the least impact of my options? And the least impact of my options are the things that I'm trying to throw out. Now, someone in this position might think it's a different way. I've been here, I've been here for thirteen years, I've seen a lot of things come and go. It's not ideal to lose anything, but I still can offer some rotations, some services, even with some of the cuts that are being made. That's what I have to look at as opposed to eliminating a program and knowing instead of coming back. And so that's one of the things I want to try to avoid. As much as that music position pains me to do that, again, I still have music people in my building who can offer music services. If I cut some of the other programs, I no longer have those positions in there to offer at all. So yes, it becomes a little more selective in eighth grade, but it was an option. And I'm just trying to come up because I don't want to insult anyone and come here and say, "We can't afford to lose anything." You know, I know you have to look at the bottom line as well. My job as the principal, I think, is to try to look at that, say, "Okay, what will work best for me?" And also to compromise it to say, "Here's some programs that while not ideal, we can work with." That's what I try to do with the reading interventionists and the music position.
You said that there are other options to address kids with reading needs.
Correct.
Do you know what some of those options are?
Well, again, we have special education teachers that historically may have had resource reading, or they pull the kids out to do resource, to reading or early intervention with them. The nice thing is about having a reading intervention program, those special ed teachers can now co-teach classes. And so reading is being helped by the reading interventionists, the special ed teachers are going more into the classes, which we want. This way, we get more kids in regular classes, but you have the co-taught model where kids are getting the help and the differentiation, differentiation help them be successful. If we lose the reading interventionists, some of those special ed hours will have to provide those services that they used to provide. Not ideal, again, but something has to give. So and that's why I'm saying when I look at these things, as a building principal, looking at academic rigor and looking at academic integrity, I still can come up with some solution to look to address those needs. It's still maybe not the ideal of what we've had, but there's still some solution. And that's what I tried to do, come up with some solution if I was going to eliminate a program, and I can do that with some of these. My other options, I wouldn't have had a solution for. So that's why I was recommending reading interventionists and a music position.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Arm?
Please bear with me, I have an ear infection, so I'm not knowing whether I'm speaking loud or I'm really quiet. Could you explain to me, and sort of getting off the beaten track, about how guidance counselors are assigned? You have four guidance counselors and you have three grades?
Correct.
Is it by teams, is it by another method?
They each take grade level, and there's one that deals with special education students.
Okay.
So one has sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we have a guidance counselor who deals strictly with special education.
Okay. Could you address how the departments are currently being met for the students, the counselors, in terms of the workload that's involved? Just trying to get a feel for possible alternatives.
Yeah. The thing, as far as guidance counselors are concerned, you're talking about the workload for guidance counselors? Yeah. What's happened too over the past couple of years in looking at that is, guidance counselors are now looking at running advisory classes, running second-step programs, which a lot of times sustains mandates, student success plans, which again, are getting more involved. So guidance teachers are also teaching in eighth grade the careers track, which allows to do some of that. There's actually, I believe they're doing one section of like a keyboard. I mean, they're involved with other jobs than just providing school counseling services, which in itself can be a yellow and stats, but they are involved with more, again, advisory, the second step. So they're actually going into classes, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, the guidance counselors go into classes and teach the second-step curriculum, which is more on social skills and anti-bullying and all of those things. You know, in addition, there's other things, if I can be so bold as well, you're also dealing with kids now, as we're trying to have kids obviously come back and have more involvement, that are more clinically needed. So there's more counseling involved, there's more proactive stuff involved. So yes, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, one who does work primarily with special ed.
Thank you.
Mr. Stansfield?
Thank you. Mr. Harrison, recognizing that at this point we have cut one reading teacher in the music position and not the second reading teacher, if I said to you, which one would you rather have back, what would your answer be?
Is there anyone back there? No. You know, at this point, again, what would I rather have back? In all honesty, I would tell you reading interventionists.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that the position of interscholastic sports administrator be reduced back to a stipend position. I appreciate a second.
Mrs. Arm? Second. Discussion? Mr. Stansfield?
So I make this motion very clearly so that everybody understands that I'm going to then make another motion if this passes to restore the reading teacher back to the middle school. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Mr. Hall?
Just going to speak to the motion that I'm not going to support cutting that position after hearing the explanation from Mr. Rocket as to why that position is due.
Any other discussion and comments? Yeah?
I'd just like to get an understanding as to what are challenges here this evening before I motion, vote either way on adding or subtracting. So, Mr. Picaro, could you, could you please update us as to how far away we are from what I think the stated goal was the other, when we first started several days ago?
Yes, Mr. Picaro?
Through the chair, at this point, the board has approved six-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars in reductions to the superintendent's proposed budget. That brings us to an increase overall from the current fiscal year of three-point-five-two. The original intent was to bring the budget down by one million dollars. And so that's what some of the proposed cuts in the column next to the approved reductions are before you today.
Any further discussion on the athletic director stipend? Comments? Okay, there's a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just like to comment that I really tried to approach this budget with Dr. Conway's mantra, "What's good for kids, what's good for kids." And classroom teachers are good for kids. So I'm going to support Paul's call of motion. It doesn't throw me, but I'm trying to do what's good for kids and stay out of classrooms.
Mr. Kill?
I appreciate you're offering up an alternative to be able to get to something that appears, however, that we're three-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars away from where we need to get to. I appreciate you offering up an alternative to be able to get to something that, it appears however, that we're $357,000 away from where we need to get to. And once we're there, that does not mean that the council is going to accept the number that we give to them. So we may have to do the stipend position that Paul is suggesting and other things, not necessarily trade it for bringing something back because we're so far away. If I did the math correctly, $357,000 away.
Mr. Stansfield.
While I respect that the board has a $100 goal, I don't know that that's a hard number that someone as cold as we must meet. So, you know, I attempted to offer an alternative that I think reduces the impact of the classroom. Frankly, you could vote for this motion and then not vote for my next motion and you have accomplished a cut at that point. But thank you.
Any other comments? I have to, I'm just going to state my opinion. I have to agree with Mr. Hall that the argument for putting the athletic director back as at least a part-time position was quite strong for me. And I know that it's been difficult for Dr. Placel to do her full-time job as well as the stipended position of athletic director. But we do have a motion on the floor and I'm going to ask for all those in favor. Opposed? Does not care. And, okay, Mr. Hall. Mr. Stansfield.
Just for pro forma's sake, I'd like to make a motion that we restore the reading interventionist teacher at VCMAS to $54,437.
Is there a second? Mrs. Stansfield. Okay, questions or comments on this? This is why I didn't want you to go back, Mr. Harrison. I want to know how many reading interventionists you have.
We have five.
So we, if we, okay, we've already cut one, which now Paul's suggesting we put back in. Okay, and how many math interventions do you have? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to restore the reading interventions at VCMAS. All those in favor? All those opposed? Does not care. Mr. Hall.
I also have a question from Mr. Harrison. And I actually think maybe some supporting from others. The unified arts, specifically around sixth grade, keyboarding. Is it true that keyboarding is also taught in the lower elementary levels at this point in time?
Yes.
And so that is kind of a, they've had keyboarding through the elementary, they're going to need to know keyboarding in the elementary in order to take the test.
Yes.
So that is in fact something, how many?
Well, we used to have that in seventh grade as well.
Exactly.
And the thought we did was to hopefully encourage it to be happening in low grades as they're coming up with the sixth grade. So now it's only offered for the sixth graders as well.
How many teachers does it take to support a keyboarding program in the unified arts?
Maybe a point five off the top of my head, but they might be teaching other things as well.
No, I, I just wanted to understand that, particularly the keyboarding component, if that was a half-time, full-time?
Through the chair, Mr. Hall. From experience that my, this person I speak from, my son, he has keyboarding in sixth grade. And he didn't really have any formal training in his elementary school with respect to keyboarding. And so he picked up a lot of proficiency. He also was able to actually learn the proper method of typing as opposed to the hot pack method, which is very notoriously inefficient. So that has proved quite successful for him. And I can't speak to others, but from a personal standpoint, I thought it was cool with the investment.
I have a question for Mr. Harrison before it is, sorry. In this case scenario, if we were to cut two teachers at VCMAS, one would also, I assume you would make it the reading interventionist, where would you take the second one if we did do that?
Is this in addition to what was decided last?
Yes, I'm just asking what we would do.
I would probably ask you to take an additional reading interventionist.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Harrison or can we let him go? Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, last one, Mr. Stansfield.
I'd like to talk about the information we received this evening, clarifying the CIBA charges that we will not incur next year. If I remember correctly, the, the funding for those students at CIBA is $34,000, is that correct? Is that an exact number?
Thirty-four thousand four hundred.
I move that the sum of $34,400 be reduced from the account 55815. Appreciate a second.
Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Would like to ask Dr. Conway your thoughts on that.
We have learned that it is a chef's school, so they will not be charging tuition going forward.
Okay, now we've already cut $10,000 out, is that?
We did that, had nothing to do with $34,000, that's correct.
Okay, so it's thirty, I'm sorry, I didn't get that number.
Thirty-one thousand four hundred. That's what we're paying this year, so.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, anything else?
Mrs. Stansfield. I'm going to move to cut, to, I'm sorry, to reduce the 51126 account by $5,614. Moving a 12-month secretary to a 10-month position.
Is there something on that? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. I'm sorry, Mrs. Stansfield.
We move to reduce 51126 by $16,960, changing the athletic secretary from a 1 FTE to 0.5 FTE.
Mr. Hall. I have a question for Mr. Rocket on that. If that position is reduced by one half, would a stipended athletic director be able to handle a load without a full-time secretary?
I don't think so because of the numerous daytime commitments that require just all day, things filtered in. A good example might be today when ADs throughout the state or their secretaries typically have to communicate to cancel events and such that. There's kids stopping in all day, so I just don't think it could be done without some administrative support.
So if we were to keep the athletic director at 0.5 and have a half-time secretary, you believe we could get the job done?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Rocket on that? Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to reduce the athletic director secretary by one half. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? I'm standing. Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Stansfield?
I'd like to move to reduce 51126 by $15,437, reducing the special ed secretary from 1 FTE to 0.5.
Mr. Hall.
Second motion.
Thank you. Is that at Rockville High School?
That is.
Okay, any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Let's see.
Through you, Ian. Where are we, Mr. Picaro?
Through the chair. At this present time, the board has moved to reduce the budget by $715,027. Brings us to 3.37% of an increase.
Mr. Hall.
I'd like to move that the board reduce account 51125 in RHS, the assistant library position, $14,210.
Is there a second? Mr. Kim. Discussion? Mr. Stansfield.
I'm not going to support this particular motion. My understanding is that the staff at the library at the high school is already incredibly constricted and that taking away this position would cause quite a bit of hardship on that department. Thank you.
Mrs. Bush.
Last time we met, the position was cost was $12,000. How did that change?
Mr. Picaro, can you answer that for us? Thank you.
Through the chair, we went back and looked at the position and the salary was adjusted accordingly.
Thank you. I'm not comfortable supporting this because that does directly affect students. And we've had testimony here before where it is something that they go to and they use daily for support. So I'm not comfortable making that cut.
Any other comments? Questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Does not care. Thank you. Do we have anything else? Mr. Stansfield.
The, under other for discussion, there's a 10-month secretary listed, but no indication where that would be coming from. Is that a position you've already decided or is that a position that you would find?
That would be a burn-in center in the old school.
Thank you.
Do we know where that would come from?
The main office.
How many are there now?
There was a two secretary, 12-month, a 10-month, and a secretary. And then there's one in guidance and one in the assistant principal's office.
Mr. Stansfield.
And is that a position that would be lost through the nutrition or would that be an actual personnel loss?
That would be a loss.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stansfield. I don't for a minute think that the, the special ed position at the high school is not necessary and important. And I would never suggest that Mr. Riley doesn't do a wonderful job. But in the name of passions and what's good for kids, I'm going to move it down.
Sorry, point of order, we need to take it off the table first. It was tabled from our last meeting, so we need to have someone make a motion to untable it. I'm hoping.
Someone on the prevailing side, somebody else.
I know, find out the table. Did you have it tabled?
It was one of the unanimous.
It was unanimous.
Oh, okay.
Anybody can.
Right. Okay, so someone want to make that motion to untable that? Mr. Stansfield.
Make the motion that we untable the discussion on the supervisor of special education position.
Mr. Kim. You have a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now, Mrs. Stansfield.
I move to reduce the supervisor of special education to 0.5.
Is there a second on that?
Point of order, are we amending the original motion? Are we just on table or are we making a new motion?
We're just making a new motion. We untable the discussion.
The original motion was to reduce the position, so you'd need to amend.
To the point of order, is this a full position, not a half position? Is the motion was last time?
I could amend the, I could amend the motion to eliminate a half-time, a half-position. Reduce the position to half.
I seconded it last time, so I'll second this time for discussion.
Thank you. Okay, discussion? Comments? Mr. Kim.
Well, so that it's, what we're doing is we're, we're reducing the prior motion to a half. If that passes, then it'll be a vote on the remaining half. Yeah.
The motion is not to actually do the cut, it's just to reduce that cut to a half. That's the motion.
So, okay.
That's a dangerous.
And you can't just vote on the motion?
Because they would be the same. Either if you reduce the position to half, then the salary is halved. I don't see it as two separate motions. Or is that not right?
Sometimes it gets a little brain twisting, I know. Your, your motion is to reduce a motion that was 1.0 FTE to 0.5.
Yes. The motion is to amend the previous motion, basically.
Okay.
Right.
And if that passes, that?
Okay, then we have to vote on it. Then we have to make a motion to, I gotta, I gotta, sorry. So the motion is to amend the motion to reduce the position by 0.5. So if there's any, no further discussion, we take a vote on that amendment to the motion. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous now. Make a new motion. Now you know how we're talking about that.
Point of order, if I could, that, that means that the main motion
Is to take that.
is reduced to a 0.5 position. So there, therefore, there's a motion still on the floor to that effect. Now, if you want to withdraw it or, or not, but that means there's a motion on the floor, is either withdrawn or you vote to reduce it or you vote not to reduce it or you throw it, whoever made it, I don't know.
Michelle made the motion, so now we're going to discuss it. Mr. Hall.
So as far as discussion on the motion, that's where we're at at this point. I'm not going to support even a half a position based on the needs for special ed and what that position has saved and will continue to save the town of Earl. I think cutting this position, even though it's an administrative position, that, you know, it has a lot of impact. Significant dollars are saved by having this position.
But your assumption would be then that a half-time position with all the other professionals in, who could absorb some of that, you're assuming that that, that won't take place with half-time. You're, you're making it sound like I'm eliminating the position and I'm not. We're simply talking about redistributing responsibilities and there would still be a half-time position. I'm not saying, and I don't think for a minute that those things shouldn't happen for students and for cost savings, but I'm suggesting that that could still happen. You know, in the business world, we just redistribute responsibilities. So I don't think that these professionals would say it won't happen. They'll need to find a new way to make that happen.
Mr. Stansfield.
I, I have to come back to the fact that we continue to say that we're going to do what's right for the students. And every time we offer up an administrator position, we get a lot of pushback about that position and yet we're perfectly willing to cut reading teachers and secretaries. So I'm actually going to support this particular motion. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, discussion?
I just want to make sure I understand where we are here, because I'm not. We have a motion that's been amended to reflect now a staffing position that we still have in the budget of 0.5. And the motion is now down to reducing it as well, which...
No, no, it's a full-time position right now in the budget. The motion is to reduce that full-time position to a half-time position.
Could I suggest something to clarify? Mr. Kemp, if you look at tonight's worksheet, and under other for discussion, it says supervisor of special education, 123,192. I'm suggesting that that would be, that that position would become a half-time position, and the budget reduction can be accordingly, be done accordingly. I didn't attach a dollar amount because I don't know exactly what that dollar amount would be. Through you, may I ask, Mr. Picaro? Can you attach a dollar amount, Mr. Picaro? Make it a work clearer?
Through the chair?
Yep.
$61,596.
Any other questions or comments?
Would it, through you, Ian, would it be clearer to just make that reduction, Mr. Kemp? Or add that as a, add that to the motion, reduce the position to 0.5?
It's simply a motion to take it down to half of what it was, though. Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Mrs. Fisher, if I just clarify, the motion was very specific as to the position, and then in the discussion, we talked, I heard discussion about, you know, making it work. And so that was going to certainly be my suggestion this evening, is to just cut 0.5 from special education administration, because all of the jobs and roles would have to just be divvied up in another way. So rather than particular, they may all have new names at this point. So, and we're waiting for futures education as well to, they may have a great idea of reconfiguration. And so I would just ask if, in general, it could be supervision or administration for special education, rather than specifically. And if that doesn't matter, then that's fine, too. We can just...
Is everybody okay with that? Is everyone okay with that?
Quite honestly, you're going to have to do that anyway, Dr. Conway, in order to make this work, so it's just...
Correct.
We really wouldn't be doing anything different, you know, you're still going to do that.
As long as the board understands that, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Holt.
So if I understand you correctly, you're giving the special ed a half a cut, but it's to be worked out within the department of special ed? Not, doesn't necessarily have to land here, as long as it's within that department?
There are two and a half administrators. In addition, Mrs. Buell, of course, isn't in that group, but there are two and a half administrators in special ed.
So it would go down to two?
It would go to two.
Right. Thank you. All right. Anybody have any other questions or comments? Can we take a vote on the motion? Do I need to repeat the motion? No, we got it? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Mr. Holt.
To make a motion on the secretary, 10-month secretary position for $33,680. For a second.
Do we have a second on that motion? Mr. Pelina? Discussion? Questions, comments? Mrs. Aron.
Is that the one that you asked if there would be VCMAs? And that would be from any secretary positions now?
I would leave a 12-month secretary and a paraprofessional. And then two, a secretary in the guidance area and a secretary with the two assistant principals. So in that long office suite, there would be three secretaries and one paraprofessional.
Mr. Stansfield.
I just have to ask, knowing how busy that office is with all the kids coming in, I mean, are we really comfortable losing a staff member there? I've been there when it's late bell and everything, and that place is rocking.
Can we ask Mr. Harrison to adjut that, please? Mr. Harrison? How would you survive with one less secretary?
It would be, you know, difficult, only again, in our building, you have the above-and-beyond program as well, so part of the secretary of coverage goes to 5:00. So we have secretary of coverage from 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night. So it will take some doing.
So if you lost one secretary, you're saying one person would have to come from 7:00 to 5:00?
Well, no, no, no. What we have right now covers the office from 7:00 to 5:00. If you lose one of those, it's adjusting some schedules, but we, again, our building has kids starting coming in at 7:00, it is a happening place, and we have a above-and-beyond program up until 5:00, where parents are coming in and picking the kids up. It's important that we have a person in that office until that time. So it's not a matter of just, you know, giving administrative coverage till 4:00. We would have to adjust some schedules to cover that. I'm not sure, you know, without looking at it, if we lost it, it would have an effect on the building. But we'll do what we need to do.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Harrison? Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry. Okay. Mr. Picaro, can I ask you where we are at this point?
The amendment chair, $810,303 in approved reductions, 3.19 percent.
3.19?
Correct.
Does anybody have any other suggestions or motions or anything? Mr. Holt.
I'd make a motion that the Board of Education sent to the mayor. The budget has since today with the 3.19 percent increase.
Is there a second? Mr. Stansfield.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Stansfield.
I don't think anybody got everything they want. Some of us more than others, but I will support sending this to the mayor, and hopefully they understand how hard we worked to get it to the number that it's at, given the constraints that we were under.
Any other comments or discussion? We'll take a vote on the motion on the floor of sending this budget, as we've completed tonight, to the mayor. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Because we made that motion, I don't believe we need to make this coming Monday, is that true?
Oh, this is it, is that, this was it, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjut.
Is there a second? All those in favor? All those in favor of adjut? It's unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Roy, very much.